Thank you for being here to our study meeting, January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. We have four members of the council present. We have Tom Hune, Willa Whitstone in the in the room and Scott Harmon online, and I'm Councilmember Norfeldt. We excuse Don Christensen and Mayor Lang. And we are missing a member of our council that will be hopefully replaced soon. The next item of business is our minutes of December tenth. Any questions or motions?
So. Second.
All right, the minutes have been moved to be approved and seconded. Oh, in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye. That passes unanimously by those present. We have, we've had several items added to tonight's regular meeting. We'll go over those items individually as we go through this agenda here shortly. Does the council have any questions from the items that were studied in our December meeting? We also have our annual RDA housing authority, building authority meetings for tonight. Any questions about those? Are there any items on the agenda besides electing the new chairs and coach vice chair?
No, just minutes in the election of the vice chair and chair for each of those four.
All right. Let's talk about some resolutions scheduled for tonight's regular meeting. Twenty-five dash zero one, approve the purchase of a statue from Atlas Bronze Casting. We have Mr. Jake Carslanian here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Before you is what we have discussed several weeks ago or a month or so ago is a resolution to purchase the Native American World War Two coat talker statue from Atlas Bronze, and this would be installed in somewhere in Phase Two of Veterans Memorial Park. So this is very preliminary design, and it would be somewhere over the new section of the Phase Two. So what we're asking you is to approve the purchase of the bronze statue for the amount of two hundred thousand dollars from bronze, from Atlas Bronze, which previously we negotiated down from three hundred thousand. Any questions?
It's a double deduct number, like thirty percent from the county that we have two hundred thousand dollars.
So if you recall, we have had the county money, which about nine hundred thousand dollars or so, and the city's contribution to match that will be about a million six, almost five something. And from that bottom line, we are going to purchase the statue.
Okay.
Yes, we are not burdening the city or the fund any further than that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-five dash zero two, express the city's support for the city's application for transportation and land use connection grant funding. Steve Pastrick will tell us about this.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So the Wasek Regional Council administers what they call the Transportation Land Use Connection Grant Program. It allows cities to apply for funds for a variety of planning purposes. And with this, we're actually applying for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do a comprehensive update of our general plans. We've done, to make a distinction, we've done general plan updates before where it's been more of kind of a freshening up. This would be sort of a ground, ground up, like a starting from scratch update. If awarded, our match would be forty thousand. And what this resolution does is authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support and any other documents related to the grant if we're successful in our application.
What kind of things will be covered in a transportation and and land use connection program?
All right, so in in that program, it's lots of different, as far as what the the program covers or what we would use the funds for, just to make sure I understand the question.
So this is to perform an update to our general plan.
Correct.
And so is it for the whole plan that this money will be used for?
Exactly, so it would be essentially like a complete review of our general plan. So it it definitely includes, you know, transportation and land use are really the the main components of that of that plan.
The final point about the letter of support, do we know what?
Basically, they, as part of the application process, they require a letter from the mayor essentially saying that they're they're aware of this, that we're not just a staff just making an application and and committing the city to something. It's, and so in order for the the mayor to sign it, we need to have the approval of the council to because if we are awarded, we would need to make the the match for the project, so.
So the first time, Steve?
We we have actually applied for this same grant a number of years ago, and we're successful, just not to this amount. This is a pretty big amount we're asking for. But there is a precedent, there are other cities that have received money along these, you know, around this dollar amount for the same purpose. So we're we're hoping that we'll be successful and have a competitive application.
Steve, if I may.
Yeah.
I know we'll have more opportunity to talk about the comp plan as we're getting into the budget. We'll have a budget retreat conversation. But I just want to, just a little bit, little bit of background on on this particular project that we're going to go after. Comprehensive plan, to me, would be one of the most important projects, the most important ass we're going to, we're going to bring forward through our budget process, one way or another, whether we get the grant or not, just because this will, this will essentially plan out the next twenty years of West Valley. And it's going to take a lot of work from the community, a lot of work from consultants, certainly from Steve leading, Steve and his team leading this process. But this is all part of, part of this big comprehensive plan that we're going to slash general plan that we're going to be bringing forward this as a topic of discussion this this upcoming year. Many ways, the city's at fork, fork in the road right now. And how we grow, where we grow, what we do, how our skyline is going to look, and all the questions that will be coming, will be culminated in this this plan that we come up, led by, of course, led by you all and and the community at large. And so I don't know if everyone, you know, for the sake of the public, too, just a little teaser, we'll have more conversations about it. This is obviously just the grant that'll help us fund, fund this. But we'll talk more about the importance of this project as we get going with our budget retreat coming up. I just wanted to add that there, not to steal Steve's thunder for later.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? All right, stay there, Steve. Next one is twenty-five dash zero three, to authorize the city to enter into a development agreement with the West Gates LLC for approximately one point three one acres of property. This is at seventy thirty-five or seventy fifty-five West Gates Avenue.
Thank you. So this one warrants a little bit of history. So the property that's outlined and read here is, there's three parcels. The addresses ranges from seventy thirty-five to seventy fifty-five. So by way of history, it was back in twenty twenty that the owner at the time was looking at having a a business on the property with an office run out of the, one of the existing homes in storage. Because the zoning was agricultural at the time, that license request wasn't approved. So then they subsequently requested a zone change. So this may look, sound somewhat familiar to councils. Back in twenty twenty-one, all of those properties were rezoned to manufacturing. And then there was a development agreement that imposed some use restrictions, but also required that that they build an office building, like what you see here on these images. So they were going to build a two-story office building and have storage on on the site. It was later that they actually, once the zoning was approved, they applied for a conditional use permit. You can see here on this slide, the the building that's closest to the street or to the north is the office building that they were planning to build, and then they had a warehouse in the back. So that was approved by planning commission, but then never built. And so we mentioned to them, we've had several conversations. We're trying to give you the Reader's Digest version, there's quite a bit of history with this. Just mentioning that the the agreement actually required that they have the existing buildings demolished by a certain date, and then they start construction on the office building, and that hasn't happened. And really, the the reason for that is that the landowner has run into financial difficulties and is no longer able to to build the project. And so they're looking to, they're really looking to sell the property at this point. And so the the development agreement that's before you, if approved, would replace the the agreement that's on the property now. And the the buyer is looking at acquiring the property to use primarily as a lot to store like modular buildings, so like construction trailers and the like. And they would, would like to keep the existing home that's on the west parcel of the three and use that as an office and use the property again for for storage. And so in order for them to do that, to be able to not build the office building and do what they're hoping to do with the the new buyer would require the development agreement to be essentially amended or replaced. And so just to hit on some of the, some of the high points that are in the agreement. So in the, in the original agreement, if I go back to the, this aerial, I think this will help. In the original agreement, the house you see on the the west parcel there would have been demolished. And this amended agreement, that home could remain and be used as a, as an office for this new use. The new agreement actually specifies that all the curb gutter and sidewalk would be installed along Gates Avenue. That's really, I mean, ultimately, I think the curb and gutter and those improvements would have been required under the prior agreement. It just wasn't specified, so this now clarifies that those improvements would be required. The prior agreement did allow for, you can see along the south boundary, there's some outbuildings there. It it allowed, if they could bring those into compliance with setbacks and in building code, they could keep those part, those structures. Under this new arrangement, pretty much all of the existing buildings with that one house would be demolished. They would just remove all of those. There's a few other provisions, but those are the, really, those are the main points here is that the the original agreement required them to build this, the office building you see here. And now the landowner, because of having financial difficulties, is not able to do that and is looking to sell the property, and the buyer is interested in a, in a different use on the property.
So it is a nearby seven eleven, that area, January.
So it is, so the seven elevens down on seventy-two hundred West. And so this is east of, east of that on Gates Avenue, on the south side.
And this is something we're going to vote on tonight.
Correct.
Could you review with me again what the big changes are in the development agreement?
Absolutely. So, and we, in the issue paper, we kind of summarized those, there's, there's five bullet points. And so if we go, we go back to, so looking at this image here. So these are the, this arrow is a little bit dated, but these structures are largely there. So in the upper left-hand corner, there's a home, so that's the, that home under the original agreement would have been demolished to make way for the new office. And this new agreement, that home could remain and be used as a, essentially as an office for the the proposed use. So that's the first change. The second is that, just clarifying, so this is actually an addition, that all of the like curb, so right now, there's no curb gutter sidewalk on the street. So they would be required to put in the improvements along their frontage. That's, that's an addition. The third is that you can see in this image, there are a number of outbuildings kind of to the south end of the property. The original agreement said you can keep those so long as you can meet setbacks and modify them to meet code, because a lot of those were just built without permits. The new agreement just says they have to all go. The fourth one is, if you look at Gates Avenue, the the south side of the road is transitioning from what used to be residential to where it's now largely more kind of industrial. But but right now, the two properties to the west and east are still zoned agricultural. So because of that, by code, they have to maintain a certain setback. And what this is saying is that if, if those adjoining properties were to change to something else, that they could basically have a reduction in the the setback because i- if that use changes, if that makes sense. And then finally, and this is probably the most substantial one, is that the the original agreement required that this office building be constructed as, you know, like these images show and this site plan shows. And the the new agreement would relieve them of that obligation to build this office building. Some, some provisions that would remain, there are some use limitations. So there are certain uses that they cannot do under the agreement, those are staying the same. So we're not, we're not changing any of those use limitations.
So you says you have, we have two lots, one in the east side, one in the west side. They are right now, it's agriculture, it's not commercial or like industrial, correct?
Correct, right, so.
How big are those lots?
How, sorry, how deep? How big? So these, each of these lots is, is a little shy of half an acre. So the the lot to the west is about a half acre. The one to the east, if I recall, is two of those, so it's about an acre approximately. The piece to the east is vacant, the piece on the west actually has a home on it.
So if they want to do something like this, they cannot do it because they're too small?
They could, if they rezoned, they they could do something. Now, the, just, you know, their options for uses may be a little bit more limited because they are smaller, but the, but the code would allow them to rezone to like manufacturing, to do some kind of commercial or industrial use. In fact, that's, again, in, over the last five or so years, we've had several of these properties on the south side that have come in for rezoning.
But right now, it's just the storage of modular homes, there'll be no manufacturing or?
Correct, we have clarified that, that there's, that they're not going to assemble or make those on the site. They would just store them on the site and then, you know, take them to to job sites, for example.
So right now, Gates Avenue is paved, but that there's, you know, dirt and then this property, right? So will they have have pavement all the way to the paved?
Right, so so it would, you would have finished basically from the road out to to the property would be, would be improved. And some of those other properties to the west that were also rezoned, they were also required to put in improvement. So, you know, over time, as more of this kind of turns over, we'll eventually kind of connect the dots and get, get the south side improved.
You're done, Lars?
Go ahead, I might, I might ask another question in a minute.
So this one, you know, facing south or facing north?
This one is, is facing north on the south side of the road.
Okay, facing north, south side. How about those guys on the north side is a residential?
No, so the north side is already all commercial or industrial use. I think that's like
a car lot, I mean, I mean, not a car lot, but a car parts lot?
Yeah, and I think there's a, so there's like a construction storage yard, there's, I believe it's like a tow yard or impound yard. And I think there may be a car sales business there on the north side, but yeah, it's all storage or, you know, something along those lines.
So basically, that home on the top left would stay there. The home on the
East side.
On the east side would demolish, be demolished, all the other buildings be demolished. And it would just basically be an empty lot to store modular homes.
My, so it'd be like modular offices, more like like job site trailers, that kind of thing. The, so they will be required to put in as part of this. So there's landscape requirements along gates, also along the south side, because you do have homes on the other side. So there's a masonry wall requirements, there are a number of improvements they'll need to make to the site. So it won't just, you know, just stay as is, they'll have to improve it. But but yes, as far as buildings, it would just be that one home and every, everything else would be for storage.
Oh, I'm looking at a map.
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I'm looking at a map right here, is it adjacent to a dead end, no?
It it does, ki- kind of a dead end, it's, if you look at, if you're looking at the aerial, at the end of that road, there is kind of this, almost like an alley that goes back out to the frontage road, but it's not very well improved. So while technically we do have a little public alley there, it's, I'll say it's bumpy. Unless I, unless it's been improved since I've been out there, but it's a little rough.
Sounds like what they're putting in is a big step up from what's there now. But a lot less than what we had in the original development agreement.
Right, and unfortunately, we've had, again, I didn't get into all the the history, but we've had some issues, we're trying to get the the property in compliance in terms of just code requirements. And so ultimately, I think a staff, a reason why we felt like this could be a good approach is that we have, we could get a new owner, just sort of a clean slate and kind of start fresh on the site. Because I, I think the the current owners, just at this point, given their financial situation is just not in a position to, to move forward.
Steve, I'm looking at a map right here, and in front of them is a big lot there. It's what are you going to do in the future, you know? Or they just keep it for stores, is that the stores?
So on this, on these three properties, it would, it would be primarily storage, again, that one home on the
I mean, the one in front of them, I mean.
To the north?
Yeah, to the north.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We just, I'm going to open a map and look at that. If I remember right, what's directly north of them was either like an impound yard or?
There's something like that.
Yeah, and 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 so that's not, that's not affiliated, or it's a different property owner. I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm looking at that, I believe it's still an impound yard, but I, I'm not a hundred percent on that. It could be a different use now.
And go to the east side, it's kind of like office warehouse, right?
Right, the the very large buildings, yeah, that's the R Industrial Park, and those are large, the industrial warehouse, like distribution type centers. But there's no, there's no access between those, right? Like this, that, there's not a connection between gates and that new industrial development.
Any other questions on this? All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
The next resolution for tonight is twenty-five dash zero four. This is, Dan Johnson's going to present, Kobe's going to present this one. This is to approve modification number one to a federal aid agreement between the city and UDOT for Lancer Way.
Yep, thank you, yeah, Kobe Wilson with the Engineering Division. So I come to you today with some good news and some bad news. The good news is we're getting ready to get started on Lancer Way reconstruction. The bad news is we're getting ready to get started on Lancer Way reconstruction. So we got a year of of pain in front of us. A lot of that year is going to be one-way on Lancer Way. It'll be essentially westbound, the eastbound direction will be closed for a good portion of the year. We are going to try to leave from Constitution to Bishop Street two-way as much as we can, but there will be a two to three month period, well, that will be one-way as well. But the purpose of the the agenda item today is, you may recall the previous federal aid agreement that we had that we established back early on in the, in the preliminary phase of this project was for eight million dollars. As the project narrowed down the scope and kind of finalized the design, in addition to that, Public Works has decided to do a betterment to this project to include some underground stormwater detention, as we don't have stormwater facilities south of Lancer Way. So part of this project will be to install an underground detention system underneath the west City Hall parking lot where the old credit union was. So that's being included in this project as well, which has added some costs. So the item today is for a modification to the federal aid agreement. As mentioned, the previous one was for eight million dollars and and about six million of that was from the federal STP funds, and then we had about two million of state T-TIF funds. And we were kind of using those funds as our match to offset each other. So originally, we didn't have any contribution. With the the need for an additional three million dollars, we actually last fall, once we kind of saw the, how much we needed, we went back to WFRC, requested a board modification. We were successful in getting another one point two five million from the STP funds and then a small amount of fifty thousand dollars from, from the tap active funds, which brings the remaining amount to one point seven million dollars, which we're going to use our stormwater utility budget to do that, the stormwater system, which we, which I just mentioned. So that is the item that we have. This bid opening is actually scheduled for next week. We anticipate bids to be open next Thursday, and due to our coordination with UTA, as they're chomping at the bit to get started at the recon, of the reconstruction of the bus hub, you'll actually be voting on this tonight as well, so that we don't, once those bids are open, we don't delay an NTP to the contractor as the schedule between the coordination between UTA and our project is is kind of critical at this point. So in summary, that's, that's this item. Any questions?
Any questions?
When are you going to finish?
So our goal is to finish in one construction season. So pavement and everything will be done before October, but then they'll still be out there after October doing outside work, you know, minor landscaping, some concrete work. But our goal is to get this done this construction season. Typically, we'll more than likely have a small punch list that has to be addressed next spring.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-five dash five, this is to award a contract to Lightlink Communications Incorporated for the twenty twenty-five streetlight project. Mr. Dan Johnson.
Thank you, good to be here with you tonight. That was a great introduction to this item. This is a streetlight project that we put out to bid, as you'll recall, we came to you a few months ago and requested authorization to purchase the lights and supply them, supply them to the contractor, because they're kind of a long lead item.
and requested authorization to purchase the lights and supply them, supply them to the contractor, because they're kind of a long lead item. And uh council authorized that, and we we bid the project and and got um actually great bids. Uh, we had a total of six bids. And the lowest responsible bidder was uh Lightlink Communications, who's generally a boring contractor, and most of the work on this project is actually boring the conduit into the ground, and and they've hired a subcontractor, that's the electrician, that is an electrician that we've worked with quite a bit, so we're very comfortable with the uh with the contractor, and um, and so the the contract amount is seven hundred and twenty three thousand, and we're requesting set up to seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in potential change orders would be our our spending limit authorized with this project, so there's questions, I'll answer them.
Pretty sure you've gone over this, just briefly, how are these uh both these items or these areas picked, was it just the age of the restructuring?
Uh, so the the biggest area is Lake Park Boulevard. And that area we're picking, um, you may recall, that whole area was dark, the 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 lights that were there were installed in the late nineties with a direct burial installation, so there was, the wire was just in the dirt, and so once it gets hit, it's very hard to to find where the fault is and and to correct it. Um, so there's no conduit that we can pull the old wire out and and fix it, and so those Lake Park Boulevard has been dark for handful, several years. There have been lights out there that just don't function. And last year, we did a Lake Park Boulevard, or excuse me, a Lake Park Restoration Project that kind of covered uh the east side of of Lake Park. And this gets the rest of Lake Park um restored, and so that one, we we decided that was a priority, because it's such a main thoroughfare that had lighting, and and so we're restoring lighting on there, and then the rest of these areas were selected by our by our street lighting team, and they really focused on areas that are dark. Uh neighborhoods that have very poor spacing or uh which so they're kind of sporadic in the in the placement throughout the city, but we're we're trying to light up some of the few areas in throughout the city that don't have any lighting at all. Before we go and tackle kind of a reconstruction type of a scenario, so I don't know if that answers your question.
Me or pretend it looks like?
Mr. Scott Harmon, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, um, yeah, I'm kind of to go off of uh Councilman Wetstone's question, it seems like a year ago when we talked about this, that we were gonna do a year in Lake Park, and then a year in some residential areas, and then a year back in Lake Park, and so yeah, just wonder what the the plan is for hitting some this looks like it's for more Lake Park, but when are we gonna hit some residential?
Well, most of this, I'd say, I wouldn't say, I I'd say it's probably about half and half, I think half of it's maybe even less than half is Lake Park, and the rest of it is residential, I don't know if you can see on the map, you've got little spots scattered throughout the city, the biggest one is Lake Park, but um, but we also had a little bit of money in the uh the streetlight utility fund balance from when we initially set this thing up. We had some extra funds, and so that you'll notice that there is a budget opening required, because we're requesting that two hundred thousand dollars come up out of the fund balance and and be authorized to spend to get this project done. And and that really is because we we did say that, we were intending to go every other year and kind of go back to Lake Park, but we thought it would, since we had the money sitting in in the fund, um, we had the means to make it work, let's just get it done now. And um, and then we can focus on what's next.
Thank you, any other questions?
And we're also requesting, this this is on your agenda to be voted on tonight. Um, we appreciate the the accommodation to get a couple of these things done a little quicker.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, we have some items on the consent agenda. Do you have any uh questions about these, or any, is there anything that you would like to to talk about, these are typical right away purchase agreements, warranty deeds, construction easements, a new planning commissioner, Rob Durfee. Not hearing any questions. All right, let's go to our communications, seven A. The Victims Advocate Report, Jessica Willis.
Thank you, my name is Jessica, I am the Victims Services Coordinator. Uh, one of our grant requirements is that twice a year I come to city council and kind of give you all an update on what we've been up to. I enjoy the opportunity just to tell you all how wonderful my team is and um the great works they do for the city. You can go to the next slide. In twenty twenty four, we helped approximately two thousand victims in West Valley City. Um, year to year, that number is fairly consistent, we're right around two thousand each year. Uh, we provide a lot of different services to the victims of West Valley, our advocates kind of wear two different hats, we are city prosecutor advocates, which means we are there through the entire criminal justice process with victims, we are attending court, we are helping prepare victim impact statements, we are helping prepare for testimony for preliminary hearings and trials. In addition to that, we are um assisting the police department in several different ways, we are on call twenty four seven, that means that we are out on scene with law enforcement at all hours of the night to be there for victims of crime. Uh, we also attend interviews with law enforcement and um follow up with the victims afterwards with resources and support. We have several different funding sources, um, one of them is West Valley City, and then we are funded by three different grants, the Voca Grant, the State Grant, and the C D B G Grant. We get emergency funding through the Voca Grant that allows us to do wonderful things for people, such as put them in a hotel for safety for a few nights, um change their locks on their homes, give them security systems, pay their rent to help them get back on their feet. And that funding is uh is a huge asset for us to assist victims. Um, I'm in the process of writing our new grants for twenty twenty five, and our goals are going to be essentially a continuation of what we are doing, and so to quantify that, our courtroom attendance, we will assist approximately three to four hundred victims in the courtroom attendance. Um, we will provide emergency financial assistance to about seventy victims. We will provide crisis counseling to about three hundred victims. Um, we are there to inform victims of their rights and the criminal justice process, and that will be about a thousand victims, we will help with that. Um, with law enforcement accompaniments, we will help about two hundred victims. And with victim impact statements, we will help about two hundred victims. Does anyone have any questions?
How many staff members do you have?
There are a total of six of us. And also Ruby, our facility dog. So we have one furry staff assistant.
Thank you so much, this is important work.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next is uh our favorite, the conflict of interest disclosures, Brandon Hill.
All right, um, Brandon Hill at the Legal Department, um, this is uh something that you've done in some form every year, but uh there are some new requirements that the state has passed during the last legislative session, and so we're gonna walk through those today. Um, since this is about ethics, I get to give you my favorite Huey Long quote, so when he summed up his career in politics, he described himself as the last red hot Papa of Louisiana politics. So what I want to ask you to do is if you are thinking of doing something that would make you a red hot Papa, don't do it. Give me a call, I will get you an Uber and get you out of that situation. So this is about avoiding those kinds of circumstances, and so we have the Municipal Officers and Employees Ethics Act, which governs the conflicts of interest, how we manage those, um, what we have to disclose and all of that. What the state did during the last legislative session is essentially required municipal elected officials to do the same disclosures as state legislators and certain other state officers, governor, lieutenant governor, um in certain agency heads as well. And so what we have done is put together that disclosure in a form here that's a questionnaire, and so all you will have to do is answer those questions on the questionnaire, submit, and um Nicole and Aaron will put it in the fancy format that the state requires and have it on the website. So what I'm gonna do real quick is just walk through this questionnaire and give you an example of how you do that. Um, and so um, some of these are pretty obvious, and a couple of them require a little bit of thinking, and so I'm gonna walk you through what that looks like. What is your name? Um, if you can't get that one right, I can't help you. So we're gonna start there. So the second one is provide the name and address of your current employer and any of your previous employers during the last calendar year, so for instance, um, I would say in this, in this uh, for this answer, we'll go ahead and put in my name, but I would say West Valley City, thirty six hundred Constitution Boulevard, et cetera. So you just, then you briefly describe your occupation or job title, this does not have to be a lengthy resume, this isn't a CV kind of thing. You would say if you own the business, I'm an owner, or I'm an attorney, or something like that. So the fourth question is you list entities where you're an owner or officer, or you were an owner or officer in the previous calendar year, so for instance, if you own a business, you would list that. If you're on the Board of Directors for a corporation, you would list that. Um, so um, I give the example here that um that I'm the owner of Brandon Hill, Inc., a legal service company provider. Oh, yes.
Will you just stop for one second, we need to share the screen so Scott can see it.
Oh, okay, you got it. All right, are we in good shape? Okay, so here's, those were pretty easy, here's where there's a little bit of thinking involved. And so um for this next question, you have to disclose individuals or entities from which you've received five thousand dollars or more in income. That doesn't mean individual clients, so for instance, let's say I own a legal office, Brandon Hill Legal Services LLC. That's what I would list here, you don't have to go through and say, well, one of my tax clients paid me eight thousand dollars, and another one of them paid me seven thousand, so I have to list all of them here. You just list the entity that provided that income, and you do not have to list what that income is. So if you made five thousand and one dollars or five million and one dollars, you don't have to list that, you just have to list the entity. Number six is pretty similar, and this is the one that gets the most questions, I was talking to a colleague down in Saratoga, and and their folks had a lot of questions about this. So if you hold bonds or stocks in an individual entity valued at five thousand dollars or more, you list the entity here. Now, that doesn't mean a third party managed investment account, that doesn't mean ETFs or things like that that you might what that means is if in your safe, you've got five thousand shares of Apple, that you would disclose that, but if you've got um a URS account, a 401K, something like that, that's not managed personally by you, but that is um managed through a third party, you don't need to disclose that, so individual bonds and stocks is what you're disclosing there, if you don't own those directly, and it's managed by a third party, you do not need to disclose it there. Then you have, if you're in a paid leadership position or Board of Directors, and by the way, stop me as I'm going through these questions. Um, eh, if you have any questions about any of this. Number eight, if you have any real property that you would like to disclose that might raise a conflict of interest, you can do that. That's an optional thing that you can do and put that on on the table. Um, some folks in other cities have asked whether or not they have to list something like their house or something like that, you don't have to do that. If you think it might be a conflict of interest that you own a certain property, list it here. So for instance, if you owned a hundred and sixty acres of prime development territory in West Valley City, I would disclose that. I wouldn't worry about disclosing your house. Number nine is really fun, enter the name of your spouse and any member of your household to whom you are not related by blood or marriage, but not your children. Okay, so basically what this is saying is you have to tell everybody who your wife is and anybody who lives with you that you're not related to by blood or marriage. So that's a good way of getting out of moving in with your girlfriend, if you're curious. You can tell her, I can't move in with you, baby, because now I'd have to put you on the website. So that's a pro tip, that's free.
We would have to disclose like our butler and maid.
Your but your butler, your maid, your Wayne's World guy that lives in in the back, like you'd have to do all of it. Um, and so um, my dog Lady May is about to turn eighteen, so she's not gonna be a child, so I'm gonna have to disclose her. Um, you have to provide the name and address of your spouse's employer. Um, I I don't love that either, but that's simply what the state's requiring. Um, and number eleven, to Lars's butler and maid, um, shoehorn maintenance guy. Um, you provide a brief description of those individuals and their employment and occupation, so um, if you have a roommate, you would say, okay, my roommate is Will Rogers, and he's a comedian and radio host. Number twelve is your catchall. Um, anything else that you want to say, that you want to put out there so that nobody can say later if you didn't say it? And then you enter your name, signature, and the date of the submission. So the state gives you a timeline on this where you have to do it during January, which is why we're talking about it now, so you couldn't have done it back in December, and you can't wait till February, you have to do it within the month of January, and then any major changes that happen, you let Nicole know and we'll get your form updated for you. So it's a little bit of a pain, but I am happy to help as you work through this, and um and if you want me to sit down with you and help you fill it out, I'll be happy to do that as well, so. Um, any questions about um any of these, or um, we'll have a full ethics training coming up here pretty soon, but um any questions about these disclosures or anything related to that?
Up above, we're talked about current employer, so that includes National Guard, or does that have two employees?
Yeah, so what, um, so what I would, what I would say, I would, I would go ahead and disclose that, so I would say that you're um um, Air National Guard, right? Um, so I would, I would disclose both your full time employer as well as Air National Guard. Um, and for the address, just put the, put your base station.
So if like a sorry, sorry, Smith, you know, here you see as a couple rent from properties. Is that they have to put in there too?
So um, that would fall under question number eight, which would be if you own, if there's any real property that you own that you think might be a conflict of interest, and so that's up to your discretion. So if you own a rental property, you're required to disclose that on a form with um the with HR as it is. Um, as far as this form goes, you can decide if that's a conflict of interest or not. What I would say is if you're disclosing it to on the HR form, go ahead and disclose it here as well. Just to keep it exactly the same, so there's no question about that.
The link to this didn't come through on my PowerPoint, could you just send us the link?
We'll do it done, you bet. And um, yeah, and and it'll be um it'll be really easy, you just submit this, and then we'll populate a form and have it on the website, the way the state requires, so once you submit the survey, you're done, and we'll figure out the backend for you. All right. Thank you very much.
The next topic is on street parking. With Steve Pastrick. Do we we want to wait and talk about this one, more people are here? I know this is important to you, Scott, what do you think?
I mean, it is important to me, thanks Lars, um, but I think it would be more beneficial if we have a full council talking about it and hearing it, so I think it'd be better to to postpone till we have maybe even to the first of February, unless Steve wants to just kind of briefly tell us what he's working on, and then we can talk about it again in February, and we have a full council.
What do you think, Steve?
I'm happy to do whatever the council's pleasure is, we can talk tonight or or February, whatever your pleasure is.
Why don't you give us a a sneak peek into what you're gonna be talking about later?
Bet we'll do the sneak peek, so this is, I I call this the bad penny that keeps coming up, right?
The on-street parking. So we talked about this, uh, a few months ago and, and the slide that's in front of you is, or actually this slide that's now in front of you. Uh, was an area that where we've received some complaints about just the amount of cars that are parked on the street. And you may recall when we discussed this a few months ago, we talked about a potential approach where, you know, you would measure, you know, how much the length of the curb along the street and then take out the driveways. So in this example, just as a quick refresher, so that this stretch of street in the Treasure Isle subdivision, there's, uh, 1,550 feet of curb. And then you of course take out the driveways, um, because you can't park in front of a driveway. So that gives you 980 feet of, of curb, uh, where you could potentially park. And then in our code, we require whenever you have a parallel space, you'd have at least 22 feet of space for a, a vehicle to park in. And then we had discussed at the time using a threshold of, um, of 60%, meaning if you have more than 60% of the available curb that's occupied by parked cars, that we should look at, um, or at least potentially look at restricting on-street parking. In this particular example, um, if you use that 60% threshold, you could have up to 26, uh, vehicles parked before you exceed the threshold. Um, so following our conversation, we actually went out on two different occasions in the evening, uh, later in the evening, and low and behold, on both nights, we had 26 vehicles. Right, it was right on the threshold. Um, and I see, uh, Councilman Harmon has a raised hand, so.
I, I, I think I'm counting 24 houses. Is that right?
I, I believe so. I believe there's, yeah, 20. That sounds right.
And so we could have more cars in front of, of than we have houses. So it's just, I'm just trying to clarify that, so.
So the, really the, the conversation we wanted to have with the council is, um, you know, this was one approach about potentially having a, a, a method for restricting on-street parking and saying you can only park on one side of the street. But using this method, they were kind of like right on the line, uh, in terms of using this method. So, uh, really was, was looking for council feedback on whether we should say, well, we, while it's close, we're going to just leave it as is. Or if we wanted to still, uh, pursue, uh, having some restrictions of parking on the street.
This particular street.
Correct.
I think we do, we do need to have a, the full council here when we talk about this, but, uh, everybody knows where I'm at on it. And if this is one of the worst streets and it's hitting the, the edge of the threshold, then I think, you know, I'm in, I'm of the opinion that our threshold needs to be more stringent so that we can capture, if we can't capture the worst street in our city, then we're, we're just wasting our time. So that's just where I'm at.
Yeah, this is good things for us to think about and then we'll, we'll have the whole council here to discuss it next.
That's great. And one to Councilman Harmon's part, uh, comment. Um, the last time we discussed this, we did discuss the possibility of refining this a little bit because in, in our calculations, we just took out the width of the driveway. But what our code says is, you know, you can't park within five feet of either side. But if you took that out, then they actually would, would be over the threshold if you took that approach. So there, there are ways of, you know, fine tuning this if that's the council's desire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have the council calendar, any questions or? Comments about that? Many of you have some potential future agenda items?
I have one left. Before Jake, uh, PD C Manuel left and, uh, talked to me and he talked to me and he asked me for help to one, just small favor thing he asked me to do. And I look at it and I, it's a prom, I promised him I said I would. Yeah. This, uh, matter is in District Four, Hamlet Homes. Uh, he sent information over to me. And they want to make some adjustment there, so I want to bring it to the council. So we can have some thing to study to assist this, uh, uh, company. I think they've been working with our city and they've got to do more homes here and then it's a thing for us to, to have them out. And then Jake asked me to do this, so I would love to do this in big pain.
So, um, the developers reached out to me too. I haven't been able to meet with him, but he sent me um, an email. He would like to, to change the development agreement to, to make it so that he can build homes that won't cost as much and pass those savings on to the new owners. Is there anyone else who has a feeling about this, would like to have it on a future agenda?
Um, I'll just chime in a little. Um, I, I met with the developer a month ago, I guess, and, and, uh, you know, tried to consider all, all sides. Um, but I think at, at this point, I'm not in favor of changing a whole lot. Um, uh, with the development agreement, so that's where I'm at.
Well, with just the, the four of us here, I don't think we have enough to, to put, place that on the agenda. Um, so if, if you want to continue and try to get some of the people who aren't here.
So maybe wait until February or something.
Do what?
So wait maybe two next month or something. We have, uh, a full council.
Yeah.
And then we bring it up again.
Yeah, for right now, I don't think we have enough. Thanks. Any other potential future agenda items?
I do have two, just quick ones. Um, I emailed a few weeks ago, uh, about the Magna Mosquito Abatement District. Um, we have two interested candidates and we just need to select one of those. Um, I emailed you all of their bios. Um, so I, I heard back from one council member, but if the rest of you could maybe take a look at that and just let me know if you have a preference. Um, we'll get an issue paper and resolution and, and bring that forward to the council once I have enough of response, if that's okay. Or we could also talk about the candidates here as well, whatever your most comfortable with.
Planning on responding and I just totally forgot this one.
Thank you.
Um, and the second, I just handed out the, uh, finders for our District Four vacancy. We had a total of 21 people pick up packets and 16 ended up submitting. So we do have a large pool of candidates, uh, who will be interviewed on January 28th. We're just kind of fine tuning some of the more final details for how that evening looks. Um, I'll be emailing out just kind of a, here's what to expect that night, um, to both the mayor and council and to the candidates um, here by the end of the week. But just wanted to see if there was any other questions that I could answer now. Feel free to call, email with any questions that you may have.
Are we required to interview all 16 candidates?
We are. Yep, as long as they meet the qualifications, which we verified that they all do, we have to follow them.
Can we do it up in one day?
One public meeting, yes.
We are required to, to fill the vacancy within 30 days, is that right?
That's correct. So we're on a tight.
Something happens, yeah, we're.
Yeah. There's been some new changes to state law about how candidates are determined. There's some coin tossing involved, but we'll, we'll get that information to you so that you know how that looks.
Thank you. Any council reports?
Since the last time we met.
Yeah. Have you been doing anything since then?
Back that far, but I will mention there's a ribbon cutting person across the street here, and there was a really cool article on the Tribune this morning. I'm going to check that out.
You? All right, do we need a closed session? All right, um, I don't see any more business, so one more motion.
What was it, George?
Um, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned by unanimous vote of those present.